Good morning. We will call the November 4th, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. I will ask Councilmember Martha Wallace to leave us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for allowing us to come and gather together, discuss issues, listen to concerned citizens, and try to make the best decisions possible. The only way we can do that is through you. Lord, we ask you to open our minds and open our hearts, to listen to what is the best, but let it always be your will. Dear Lord, please let us be mindful of those that are going through hard times right now.
Yes.
And let us truly remember each day the golden rule. Let us practice it. Let us live by it. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The Lord is the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Henry's roll call. Marquesha, I see that all council members are present. I implore your approval of the minutes of the October 14th City Council Meeting. Those minutes were emailed out to you all. There are no additions or corrections. They'll stand approved as read. I have your proclamations and recognitions on the agenda, but I do want to take a moment to recognize, I think we have some members of Leadership Jackson, Class of 2025. If you would, I think y'all are here. Y'all want to stand, get recognized.
Yeah.
Glad to have y'all here this morning. And move on to invitation for public comment. None signed up? And we go on to first reading. Item 1 is proposed budget amendment number 30 to recognize insurance recovery for fire department Tower 1, the amount of $13,856.16.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item 2, proposed budget amendment 31 to recognize an appropriate $69,000 for state and local cybersecurity grant. Motion?
Second.
A motion second. Discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item 3 is proposed budget amendment number 36 to reallocate funding for vehicle leasing program, the amount of $285,390.90.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Discussion?
Yes, I need some discussion. I don't know. I wasn't able to get the information at the pre-agenda. Somebody explain that to me, please.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. What we are doing, you may remember, a few months ago, we had a presentation about how we can modernize and update the age of our fleet by going from paying with cash through capital to a leasing program. This amendment enacts that plan, and then there's other additional items on the agenda that govern that partnership with Enterprise. What this amendment does is it moves essentially vehicles that were going to be purchased out of the bond package out. Then we move several, two items that you had approved in the budget in capital into the bond package as the plan. That frees up several hundred thousand dollars that we are going to use to pay for leasing approximately 65 vehicles for the rest of the fiscal year.
This item is just on the reallocation of funding. So we get down to new business council members, and we can have the discussion in as much detail as you all want on the agreements with Enterprise. But this item right here is just for, I don't want us to get ahead and get confused. This is just on the reallocation of funding.
So what we are doing is essentially moving money from capital to new leasing line items in the budget that are broken down by department as to what vehicles, what departments would get new leased vehicles. And so you can see, for example, listed by groundskeeping, engineering, parks and rec, building codes, et cetera.
Will that have any effect on the fund balance being decreased in any kind of way?
It's budget neutral.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't, it was what?
Budget neutral.
Okay.
Councilor Lawrence?
We're going to take away $785,000 from the Civic Center Security System. Is that correct?
No, that's, it's 200,000, and it's not that that item is not being funded. It's just the pot of money we're using to pay for it is changing.
Excuse me, repeat that again. It's not, it's 200,000?
Correct.
And you said it's not?
It's, it will still be paid for. It's just the pot of money being used will be different.
I don't understand how you can take it away and it not affect it.
Because the, by taking the vehicles out of the bond package that you all approved, that frees up capital that, or funds from that bond that we will use to cover for that IT security system at the Civic Center.
So is the Civic Center Security System being cut 200,000? Yes or no?
No, it is not being cut. It is the fund, the bucket of funds being used to pay for it is changing.
What account number do they come out of?
It will come from the bond funds when we get those proceeds in the future.
So we have approved the bond, but we're taking money out of it to pay for this?
Not at the current time. We will, of course, wait until the bond funds come in, Councilman.
So you're asking us to vote for amendment on money that's not there?
No, no, the funds are there because they're currently in the capital. We're moving from capital to leasing line items. And then at a future date, we will pay for that same item from the bond funds when they come in. You're not approving paying for anything that you don't have yet. You have allocated that money in the budget, in capital.
Mr. Chairman, is this the appropriate time for me to ask this about? Well, I want to know the cars that are coming out from the 26th, from the bond package?
Sure. So in the bond package, there was a F-150 for fire administration, two F-150s for fire operations, four Ford Explorers for fire prevention, two Ford F-150s for fire training. Groundskeeping had a GMC 1500 Sierra. Maintenance had a service truck with a utility bed, and a street department 2500 GMC utility truck. All those vehicles will still be, I don't want to use the word "purchased", but obtained just through leasing instead of purchasing with cash.
Okay, so those are the ones that we're starting with. And I haven't been able to ask Austin, but I must stick last week, and you're good with this and feel very comfortable.
Yes.
And I did get to ask Chief Riddle. So that was my main concern. I want to know that department heads are good with this and onboard. Thank you for that.
Yeah, they're going to get more and newer vehicles, so they're excited.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify for me one more time. This money is coming from capital?
Correct.
And it's going to be, we're using the bond issue, which is not approved, as backup to it?
To pay for the items that are being moved out of capital at the current time.
Do you have a question, Councilman?
Um, no.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one, no.
All right, move on to second reading. Item 1, proposed budget amendment 24 to reallocate $21,700 from street maintenance operating supplies asphalt to street department resurfacing for South Creek.
So moved.
Motion second. Discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item 2, proposed budget amendment 25, recognize TDEC recycling grant for $192,000.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion second. Discussion?
You need to manage a minute.
Yes, sir. I just wanted, I just wanted to hear, excuse me, just hear this again about the grant. Just wanted to hear a little bit more about it. Thank you.
So this grant was for a shredder truck and open-top dumpsters.
Okay, thank you.
What's the revenue generated by this shredder truck?
We normally outsource that to some local contractors. This gives us the ability to do it in-house, which is going to ultimately save us cost.
So how much?
Due to it being a TDEC grant.
So how much money a year are we generating cash from that? Roughly?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I know we did the math on it.
Would it be a thousand dollars or 10,000 dollars or 100,000?
I knew it was, over the course of a few years, I think, it would ultimately pay for itself.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item 3, proposed budget amendment number 28 to appropriate $125,000 for legal settlements.
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to one, no.
Item 4, consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, Article 8, Administration and Enforcement, Section 3, Amendments C, Review by Planning Commission, and D, Hearing by Governing Body.
Motion.
In motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, please.
Stand your mind. We go over what this is again, please.
Okay. If you'll look in your packet.
I'm looking in my packet. I didn't, I didn't see it. Do you have an extra one there?
It's in the ordinance. If you look in the ordinance itself.
Would have been in last month.
Yes, it would have been in last month. It's the second reading.
Second reading.
Yeah.
All right, so in the ordinance, and I'll, for those that don't have it, but basically in the ordinance, we showed you what it was before, and we showed you what it would become with the amendment and bolded the changes. So just going over that, the hearing by governing body is, the only thing that's changing is we, to align with state law, we made it 21 days. We've been using 21 days. It used to be 15 days notice prior to a rezoning. The state changed it, so we're just aligning our zoning ordinance with state law. The one before that, the review by the Planning Commission, it's always been this way, but for clarity, we put this extra statement in there. The only thing that's required by state law to have notices go out, well, I should say, state law doesn't require that we send out notices to individual property owners, but our zoning ordinance does. But the only time it says that you do that is when you're rezoning property. All right, so text amendments, things like that, don't require sending out notices to private property owners because text amendments affect the body of the document, not their, an individual property. So what we're doing is, as I mentioned, and I know I wasn't here last time, so I don't know how much was talked about, but we're in the process of changing some things in our zoning ordinance, simplifying things, recombining things. And while we're doing that, the names of districts could change. Or we may combine two districts, and the name may change. To clarify this, because that, changing the name of a district will actually change our zoning map, it won't change anything other than now it'll be labeled something different. We made this statement in the zoning ordinance. It says, "Set notifications shall not apply to amendments to the zoning map due to changes in the text of the zoning ordinance that rename, reclassify, reorganize, combine, create, or eliminate certain zoning districts or overlays." So as we go through the zoning ordinance to simplify, we may remove districts. We may combine districts, and when we do that, the map will actually change. And so it won't be a rezoning, but the map would change. So to clarify that, so that people don't get confused and say, "Well, my zoning changed." Well, no, the name of it may have changed, but the things that, that control what's done on your property or to your property hasn't changed. So that's what we're doing here. And so we just put that, would we have to put that in there? No, but we felt it was better if we clarify that so that there's no confusion in the future.
So, Mr. Pollitt, you're saying that even if it's redone on the map for?
You pull the microphone down.
Oh, sorry. So you're saying that the zoning ordinance, if it's renamed, reclassified, reorganized, that this will in no way change that if it was farmland or everything will remain the same as it was zoned?
Yes, if we change the name of a district.
That's.
We're not changing anything to the substance of that district other than, say, for instance, we have two districts that were separate, and now we combine them into one. The regulations will still be the same, but because we're combining them into a new district, they may have a new name, or we're reclassifying what that's called, or then we, it will change the map. And since the map is part of the zoning ordinance, and when we rezone property, you know, the map changes, we want to make sure people understood that if the map changes due to a reclassification or recombining or text change, that's not the same as a rezoning.
Right.
And we're saying that we're not going to send out 20,000 notices to everyone within 500 feet of every property in the City of Jackson. So that's, that's what we're basically saying here.
And then the second thing, the 21 days, and that's good to any of the residents benefit because it changed from 15 to 21.
That's right. It gets longer.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
You look, you're about to ask a question. Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Stand. Go on to new business. FY '24 Audit Presentation by Malden and Jenkins.
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We are pleased to have with us this morning Mr. James Benz from Malden and Jenkins, who recently completed our FY '24 audit. Sure.
Everybody.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Glad to be here. My name is James Benz, and I'm a partner with Malden and Jenkins. I am here to present the June 30, 2024 financial audit results. And just to, I guess, confirm, I will also be in the Audit Committee meeting presentation following this as well. We did just issue in October the June 30, 2024 audit. It was, it has now been accepted by the state as well. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, stating that the financial statements as presented are materially correct in accordance with standards. We issue our opinion in accordance with government auditing standards as well as generally accepted auditing standards. And what that means is we test the information within your funds in order to give our opinion as to whether or not they are materially correct as presented. It is not an absolute assurance, and we do not test every transaction as any audit in the State of Tennessee works that way. We did propose and post several audit adjustment entries, and those are included in the financial statements, which is part of the materially correct as presented opinion. Those, because they were adjustments identified in the audit process, did result in some findings, some material weaknesses identified in the internal controls, which, again, we'll go over in detail with the Audit Committee. But to let you all know, we did have those. The auditing standards do define a point in threshold when those are required to be reported in the financial statements. All of those have been discussed with management. We are currently discussing ways to ensure and implement processes to try to prevent and reduce those in the '25 audit. But obviously, we're in October, so we're talking about the June 30, 2025 audit, which hasn't started at this point. The city did expend more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, which does require you to have a single audit. For June 30, 2024, you had about five and a half million of those expenditures. And following the guidance from Office of Management and Budget, your program that we were required to test this year was the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. And so we did issue an unmodified opinion on that as well. So a clean opinion on the compliance. With that, we did have two control findings that we identified and included in the report. And those as well have been discussed with management so that corrective action can be taken on implementing those. I don't know if you all have any questions that you'd like to discuss, but?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
The, I'm a layman, and I don't know all this stuff, and you're the expert. In reading the auditor's discussion and analysis that you presented, it appears to me that your report and your findings about the City of Jackson, that it's not good. This is not a good report. I hope I'm wrong when I say that. I hope you say, "No, you're wrong." Am I right on that, based on what I'm reading?
I guess it depends on how you define good, right?
Good would mean that there would be very few comments and findings. But it seems to me like there are a whole lot of comments and recommendations and findings that don't make us look good.
So you receive a clean opinion, which is, tells the users of the financial statements that the information within them is correct and accurate and can be relied on. So that's a good report as a starting point. There were multiple weaknesses identified in the internal control structure. Some of them are repeats from the prior year. Those are all items that can be improved upon and can be addressed in future years.
That's what I want to get to particularly, the repeats. How many repeats did you find?
I think we had four repeats from last year.
And what were they?
Revenue recognition, expenditure recognition.
Reconciliations.
Interfund balances reconciliation, and a reporting control problem on the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund grant.
All right, and, Mr. Reed, why were they repeated?
The reconciliation finding was tied primarily to the transition that we made from one accounting system to another, and also from one banking system to another. If you read the detail in the finding right there, it's pretty explicit on how some of those things happened. You know, in the email that I sent you guys the other day, I mean, I recognize that timely reconciliations are essential to actually, you know, useful reporting for us. There are some process improvements that we're working on now, as well as just actually operating in one piece of software will help that. When we look at our revenue recognition and also the expense finding, those are process-oriented, Councilman.
The what?
Process-oriented. When we've talked about this the last couple of weeks, we, you know, there were staff members at one point that actually took care of these things. Those people have transitioned out, transitioning to new software, created a different process in those things, and, I mean, these are all things that we want to address, should be able to address.
To such an extent that next year, we won't repeat them? I mean, look, look, things to me, and again, I'm a layman.
Right.
You know how to do stuff. That we can look at stuff and see where it's going before it gets to the point that it's being repeated.
Right. You know, the, it was interesting because these, the first four audit findings this year were repeats from last year, but the conditions that allowed them were actually a little different. And so that's not a good thing, but it does mean that the, the process changed enough that it actually, if they had, if, and I say "they" because I, and I'm not, I'm here now, and I'm your guy, but I wasn't here on June 30th, 2024, okay? If they had fixed the previous problem, these are new, these are new conditions that created the same finding. Some of them are. It was just a slightly, a slightly different set of circumstances that led to them. All of these things can be addressed. We are working to address them in FY '25, and certainly by FY '26. And, I mean, it's not ideal, but this is a snapshot from June 30th, 2024. We're trying, we're getting better every day, Councilman.
And, Mr. Auditor, is there anything that your company can do to let us know that we are headed toward a repeat of a finding so that we won't repeat it? Or do you, you might already do it. We may ignore it. I don't know. Tell me.
So when we provide the recommendations, when we begin our interim work for the next fiscal year, we will work with management to remind them of what the findings were and the processes that need to be addressed. But we don't, we're external auditors, so I can't come in and be a part of the process that cleans up the deficiencies that were identified the year before. We opine, as the external auditors, that the processes have been changed.
Okay, this is what I'm asking. Can, I just now thought, we got an internal auditor here. Can the internal auditor look at stuff? When do you get, when do you get your stuff in order to start working on your books? When do you get it? What month do you get it?
What month?
Yeah.
It depends on.
When you start your work.
On management's closeout.
All right, what month would that be?
So for June 30, 2024, we got the information in March of '25.
All right.
Typically, it would be, historically, it would be about three to four months after you're in that we would get the information to start.
All right, so would the, would you or with the internal auditor or either the Audit Committee be able to look at what's going on, say, in whatever month? And say, "Look, we are going, we were about to repeat what we did last time. Let's make some adjustments right now." We could do that, couldn't we?
Your internal auditor reports to the Audit Committee, so that would be something they would have to direct?
So the Audit Committee could do that?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Sure. Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Reed, I'm not running away from you. You know, some people would say that, you know, that's the recorder's doing that. I'm in boat with you.
Yeah.
So I ain't running away from it. When I say "you" means "we," okay? So insofar as looking at the year endings that come to us, there should be a point that we could say we are headed down the wrong road. Let's stop it and adjust it right now. We can do that, can't we?
We can.
Well, why don't we do it?
When we arrived, when we began this process in October of '25, which, excuse me, October of '24 last year, we submitted a trial balance to Malden Jenkins at the beginning of November, I believe. And it was very evident when we submitted that trial balance that it was not, it was not workable. I had been here two weeks at that point, but, you know, I looked at it. I'm like, "I don't know why we sent this." It was not, it was, and then, so we spent the next three months essentially cleaning, cleaning that up. A big part of that had to do with cash balances. And that particular fire, if you want to characterize it that way, was the most important thing for us to be able to produce a clean, unmodified financial report than anything else we were doing, to get the cash balances correctly. And so a lot of this other stuff, especially the revenue recognition and the expense accruals, those things were pushed to the side in order to get the report issued in a timely manner. This is something, I mean, right now, they're posting these FY '24 audit adjustments today, which will allow them to begin that, verifying those cash numbers again, and also looking at these accruals and these, and the different revenue recognition structures that they're working on. I cannot guarantee you, Councilman, that we will not see similar findings next year, but it is, excuse me, for FY '25, but it is our goal not to, it is our goal to get better and to reduce these findings. I mean, that's, that's our job ultimately. Now, there are some things that you guys, Council and Audit Committee, will be able to help us with.
Sure, but let us know.
And I'm going to ask you.
Sure. We all in it together?
But if you recall, in Audit Committee, I told you several months ago that this was going to be, this audit was going to be a difficult, a difficult audit. And we see that it is. My goal is for FY '25 to be better, FY '26 to be almost perfect, and FY '27 is going to be great. Now, a lot of this is because some of the things that resulted in these findings, we have continued up until today. The processes, some of these old processes, some of these things that we've carried over from decades of this work, some of those processes continue up until today. They are still going on. We've got to figure out how to re.
Let me stop you there. Why are they still going on?
Because we.
If they contribute to the problem.
Because some of them we identified a month and a half ago, and we haven't yet discovered or figured out the best way to reformat that process to give us, first of all, to make it faster, and also faster, more efficient, and more accurate. We're working on it, Councilman.
Do you, do you have enough people in your office?
No.
To alleviate some of this problem? Is that part of the problem? You don't have enough staff?
One of the things that we are going to do at some point is ask for either, ideally, short-term, the quickest way to solve some of this stuff will be to bring in a consultant to help isolate some of these things and speed this through someone. But long-term, yeah, I'd like, I would like to have a couple more counties.
Two?
Chairman?
Like to have two, whoa, you like to have two more? You said a couple. Two?
Well, subtle, I mean, if you remember during budget season, I said I'd like at least one. Two would be great. But yes, sir, I mean, ultimately, that's, that would help.
So you need two more full-time folk in your office, and that would help alleviate these problems from occurring again?
Ultimately, yes, sir.
All right.
What we want to do, though, is get this, is get, get a lot of this stuff, especially get these processes redeveloped so we can stick to that after we, after we get the process developed.
Okay, and my last question, then I'll be through with this. On page 20 of the findings, Mr. Auditor, you have on here about the internal control. You have budgeted expenditures in excess of appropriations. During the current fiscal year 2024, the city actual, the city's actual expenditures across multiple funds, the. The city actual, the city's actual expenditures across multiple funds exceeded the annual appropriations made by the city council. And then you have the amounts, general fund, $2 million, solid waste fund, a million, et cetera. Mr. Reed, where did that, those excess funds, where did they come from? The general fund?
They came from the funds that were noted in the, in that list right there. For the most part, except for H&amp;S, all of those other funds are fungible. So you, I mean, if it is required to fund debt service, then, and there's funding available in another fund, you guys will do a transfer of some sort. I will tell you, as far as exceeding the budget, one of our, one of our Budget Committee members pointed out to us, and this is not unknown to you, I'm sure, the City of Jackson has exceeded its budget for the last seven, nine years? It is not an, it is not a new finding for you. One of the things that we're working to do diligently is to create the controls in place to prevent that. One of them, and the Budget Committee's heard me say this several times, and I think Audit has heard me say this as well, the conversion to the new purchase order system is a hard block on, on overspending a budget line, and that will certainly help.
I yield.
I have a question.
Thank you.
I do have questions, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, this is a year, a week of your anniversary being with the City of Jackson, and I want to say thank you because I can't imagine what you've gone through, but I do want to say thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Next, I want to address Councilman Donell's concerns, and I'm so glad he's on the Audit Committee. And some of the things that we brought up last month and the month before, I had to ask, is there guidelines that we can help put in place? So that's going to be something that the Audit Committee really needs to work on, and I want to encourage Councilmembers after this, he's going to be in the Audit Committee right, right after this, you can ask more questions. I do want to openly say that we have talked in the Audit Department, not, excuse me, not the Audit Department, Audit Committee, but do feel that you need help. We're very strained with our budget, but when we are having mistakes like this, it certainly pays for it to have adequate help and people that are qualified to help you. So I just wanted to openly say that and say thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Auditor, you had mentioned, what's your name, sorry?
James.
James.
That was fine.
You had mentioned that from year to year, there was a repeat. So FY '23 audit, you're seeing some of the same findings on FY '24, and in both of those, there were corrective action plans, and in FY '24, we, I looked at the corrective action plans and the timeframes of when they were supposed to be, you know, corrected, and most of them say June, I think, '25 or '26. So when those, when those corrective action plans are put in place, does the city respond back to you guys to say, "Hey, this is what we've done to correct it," or where does that go? Because I'm just trying to figure out if there were the same findings from '23 and '24, and the corrective action plans were similar, who was being held accountable to make sure '23s were done and corrected, and now was there accountability because now the same things are being done and needing to be corrected in '24? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, some of these items that we have as findings are purely year-end closeout issues. So a lot of the revenue recognition and expenditure recognition are full accrual adjust, or not full accrual, but accrual adjustments that are done one point in time, and that's usually at the fiscal year end. And so, in '23, and some of these honestly have been findings for multiple years with the city, going back to '22, and I think we had some of these in '21 as well, we have a process where we have to follow up to ensure those accruals are properly happening. That process changes year to year with every entity, and sometimes it's a change in who's responsible on the management side for making those accruals, and who's responsible for reviewing to ensure that those occurred. This year, there was a turnover in management, and some of these items, the person who previously did them is no longer here, and I think, I can't say for sure, but I think that was part of the gap into why some of these repeated this year, is, as another comment says, we, the city doesn't have a great written policy and procedure, so when you have a turnover in management, some of that intricate knowledge that's not documented falls off the wayside because no one knows what the other person was doing. And so, we had that gap this year. That's really the best answer I can give you, but we do have to follow up on those findings, and that's why in the report, you do see some of them noted that they're repeats.
So, Nathan, this is a question to you, just so we can make sure the citizens are aware. We just got the finding for FY '24 audit in October. So, we all know that FY '25 is hypothetically supposed to be done December 31st. Most cities don't do that, I understand that, but can you give us a timeframe of when we're looking at that audit being done? Because it does play a role in budgeting for next year. I mean, there's a lot of variables that we need to know about before we look at...
Well, having, having accurate numbers, even accurate unaudited numbers, is essential to financial planning and to accountability, just even internally. And we have made some great strides on internal accountability on expenses. That is a reportable number, and we can print those numbers anytime you want, which is, which is a new thing, apparently. Apparently, we couldn't used to do that regularly. The FY '25 audit, our hope is to eliminate at least the first three things in these findings. I will tell you, I'm about 60% confident that we will. I know we're going to do number one, we're going to take care of that. The second and third one, which is the revenue and expense, we should be able to. There is going to be a time crunch, even now, because you, I mean, he just said we are beginning planning for the FY '25 audit right now. We anticipate issuing that report middle, late March, very early April, perhaps. That was, that is a reasonable time if we are able to get them a trial balance by the end of December, middle of January.
Because, I mean, we're, we're going to be looking at talking about the budget...
Oh, yes, ma'am.
In March, April.
Yeah, we're going to be looking at talking about the budget in January.
Well, we should be.
We, we are. I mean, and, and having, I mean, the expense and revenue portions of this, we are much more accurate than we were a year ago, and just on our own internal numbers. And that's going to be a lot more useful. But being able to have an audit issued to know definitively what, what the financial statements say and whatever corrections are necessary would be helpful.
Yeah, I just think it's important, I mean, for us as Council and residents to understand that, you know, a lot of overspending has been done, and although we would love to be able to fund and help all programs and, you know, different departments succeed, we have to be fiscally responsible as a Council, and there may be some things that have to be set aside. Not that we don't desire them to happen, but we just have to be responsible and not continue dipping into our fund balance and being, you know, in a deficit from year to year.
Budgetary compliance is one of those things that has become sort of a mantra in our office. It's become irritating to some of my coworkers, because they say, "Why can't I do this?" And I'm like, "You don't have any money."
Yeah, I mean, it sucks to hear, but, and we're not trying, I mean, to not allow departments to get what they want because you guys are the ones who keep the city running. But sometimes, we have critical needs and we have wants that always can't be funded at certain times.
You guys set policy through adopting a budget, and the departments, the different supervisors and divisions of the city implement that policy by spending those dollars the way that you intend them to be spent. In our office, the goal is to make sure that they stay inside the lines, and we're getting better and better at that, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Just for the third time, I guess, say, some of these audits have gone on three years, you've only been here one year. So it's not a one or two-year thing. I'd like to address the $4 million overspent and the comment that it's been overspent for years and years and years. To me, that's a pretty serious violation. The Charter says the City Council must approve expenditures, and we've got $4 million last year that was spent that we didn't approve. What's the consequences for that? Are there any consequences?
There's, unfortunately, the consequence is the unintended use of reserves or excess revenues that you were planning to send to reserves.
Or having to use the fund balance.
So if you're not correct, and that, the use of fund balance is what I mean by reserves...
You're making decisions on bad information if that number's not right.
Right, so if you set a budget and you plan to have X available at the end of the year, and it's over expended because controls don't catch and prevent that...
See how important that is? If we had that $4 million in this budget now, we wouldn't have a lot of these bad conversations going on about where we're going to spend money and what we need. Following up a little bit on that, on fund balance, I think, Nathan, you said that your estimate was that the fund balance was $800,000 less than you were originally projecting?
I mean, if we look at, if you look at the FY '26 budget document, and you look at the estimated fund balance for FY '24 and compare it against the FY '24 fund balance as stated in the audit, I think it's about $800,000 difference.
Which, again, is scary. Okay, all right, reconciliation. When's the last time we did a good reconciliation?
What are you talking about reconciling, Councilman?
I'm talking about expenses and revenues as a matter of we'd say on one sheet. This is how much money we spent, this is how much money we got coming in.
I mean, I mean, we, I mean, we can print that report at any time. The reconciliations, as noted in the, in the findings, have more to do with cash and also sub-ledger reconciliation against the general ledger. And those are, those reconciliations were hampered by the transition from one bank to another, as well as the transition to the new accounting system and a basic misunderstanding about how the pool cash system works. We've got great audit adjustments that we're posting right now that will get our cash at least correct on June 30, 2024, and from there, we're going to work on that pool cash balances, so we hopefully can have accurate reconciliations going forward from there. And then, there are some other processes to reconcile some of these other sub-ledger accounts.
The new system, will it prevent us from spending unauthorized money?
Yes, if you use it correctly.
Well, I'm assuming you're going to use it correctly.
We are using it as correctly as we can, yes, sir. It also identifies, it also has allowed us to identify some things that, for example, you have authorized in prior fiscal years, the expenses for which are just now payable, and you're going to have to adapt to some of that, we're going to have to move some money around, but you'll, but you'll see that as that comes.
Well, that's fine, because you can keep us ahead of the game saying, "This is coming in two months or whatever."
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Any further discussion, questions?
I do, two, two questions. How much is in the fund balance now?
So...
I mean, you don't have to go all there, just how much?
That'd be a number.
On September 30th, which is the last, I mean, we haven't quite closed September, but we're very close.
Okay.
I would say about $13.1 million.
All right.
That doesn't include a whole lot of things, right, James? But, but it, it, a pretty good, a pretty good estimate would be about $13.1 million.
And, again, me being just a layman, how closely does your office work with the internal auditor before you give everything to the external auditor? How closely do y'all work together? Because it seems to me, as a layman, that before anything goes to the external auditor, that you could submit whatever to the internal auditor, and we have a very capable one, and that if she sees something is running afoul, she could alert you and y'all could work it out before it goes to the external auditor. Does that make sense, Mr. External Auditor?
I, I understand your thought pattern there.
And if I'm wrong, just tell me.
That is not currently how your Audit Committee has structured your internal auditor? That's a discussion for the internal, for the Audit Committee.
Can you help us with that? Because you're going to our audit meeting after this.
Yes, ma'am.
So we would like some clarification, and I would like Council to hold the Audit Committee accountable for how we can help our city recorder. We've got to do that.
But back to my original question, do you and you work closely with the internal auditor about these matters?
I'm not exactly sure, I'm not sure what the audit plan and what the organization there is. We don't interface terribly much directly with internal audit, only if there are some compliance issues or certain questions about other processes that involve our office. But, but as far as the audit prep and these things, I'm not sure what the, what the audit plan or the organization there is.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be helpful, though? We got our internal auditor, wouldn't it be helpful for her to, to work with you and for you to consult with her to see whether or not things are going the way that we hoped that they would go? Because she could point things out that might obviate us being in prop, in trouble with these findings.
There are certainly...
Isn't that reasonable?
There are certainly some things here that I would think would fall under the purview of internal audit, but, again, I don't know what that structure or what that audit plan is, sir.
I don't understand what you mean, you know, what audit plan? You just go to her and just say, "Look, check this out."
I mean, we, she's in there, can you come up and help us out? I mean, she's sitting there, we dancing around her, there's a lot of course we should be asking her, because she could help out some. She's sitting right here, and we not asking her anything.
Good morning.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
So, tell us, what can we do to help with this situation? I mean, you're the audit for us.
First of all, we gotta work together.
We don't, we don't actually work together on a daily basis, but what I could do and offer as support to the revenue department is with his organized plan of corrective action, I could review that and then point out weaknesses and findings beforehand. As long as we keep the lines of communication open, I could offer that support.
Yeah, that's, that's cool, isn't it, Mr. Reed?
Certainly.
So we'll do that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that something the Audit Committee needs to recommend, or does that need to be in your job description, or how can we help make that happen?
The audit plan from the Audit Committee.
That doesn't compromise any credibility of what you're doing?
No, as long as I'm not auditing any work that I've done, that does not compromise.
All right, any further discussion?
Do you have anything to add to that?
Do you want to talk about it here or at the...
Well, we can, but I...
I think it's Audit Committee specific, can we dive into that at the Audit Committee time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Any other discussion?
All right, this is, doesn't require a vote, this is just a presentation of the audit, and so, thank you, Mr. Vince, and stick around because I've got a bunch more questions.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And thank you, Nathan.
Item two in our new business, consideration of a master equity lease agreement and addendum with Enterprise Fleet Management.
So moved.
Second, all right, discussion, discuss this?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll let him sit down.
Okay.
All right, you want to give overview first, and then we'll go questions?
Sure, so, as I mentioned, what this does, the first item that you're reviewing creates the partnership with Enterprise to lease our vehicles through them. We determine how much we want to lease through them, they give us pricing on every vehicle, so you're not committing to a certain amount or anything, what you're committing to is using them as our partner for leasing vehicles. The reason why we're making this strategic shift is, quite frankly, the condition of our fleet and age of our fleet is rather dated. Many of our vehicles are older than 10 years, many are even older than 20 years, and from a cash flow perspective, this Council has talked about planning multiple years in advance, it's extremely difficult to pay cash flow, the number of vehicles it would take to bring our fleet age younger. This allows us to do that and, and get our, our fleet vehicle age down to roughly, we expect, five to six years, which will, in the long run, save us money on maintenance and fuel costs just from newer, more efficient vehicles. costs just from newer, more efficient vehicles. Happy to answer any questions.
A couple of questions. We currently have somewhere around 480 cars, give or take, and I see a drop in about 80 cars. I was thinking we needed more cars for our officers, not less cars, so what's this drop of 78, whatever it is?
Sure, the, we may need more cars in certain departments, but we have old vehicles that are not reliable and not being used in other departments. So what this, the plan is, is to modernize in some of those, in those other departments, and then over time, we will continue to grow vehicles in some, but the net will be a decrease.
Okay. So how many years does this take before we get to where we're happy and well?
Well, it depends on, it's obviously how much, how it works is, is we will bring in the next year's budget, a continued amount, and so the, you know, the enterprise plan showed what it would look like if we were to do so over the course of 10 years, what it would look like. It's really up to us on how fast or slow we want to go. And so, but our plan is, is to, over the next, I would say, five to six years, get to a point where we're really just replacing five, six-year-old vehicles at that point.
So I'm sure you got analysis of, if we took the money from Enterprise and put that into capital, would that be enough to catch us up in that number of years?
No, because the, because when you're paying through the cash, it requires so much more. For example, like I mentioned with the budget amendment, your paying, plan was to pay for roughly 12 vehicles with bond funds versus getting 65 in leasing. So it's extremely difficult to catch up when you make these large capital outlays, and so this makes it easier to plan and, and replace those vehicles.
The proposal we had sent out, what does that do to our cash flow?
Well, it will increase your operating, but it'll decrease your capital needs.
Could you give me the numbers?
Well, the, the plan for this amount for the rest of this year is $285,000. That's why it's in the budget amendment.
So how much are we committing for?
$285,000 for the rest of this fiscal year.
And we can change the number of vehicles every year?
Absolutely. We're not, like I mentioned, we're not locked into a certain amount of vehicles. What we do is determine how much we can put towards it, and then Austin will, will figure out how many vehicles we can get for that amount.
I'd like to see a cash flow analysis of if we try to fund them ourselves versus this, to see where the balance is. I hate to take just general terms and not have dollars to it. I think that's kind of what got us in trouble with the, the audit that we spent $4 million we didn't have, and also, can you get that information of what the cash flow would be doing this plan versus the cash flow, not doing it, but trying to buy them?
We can certainly do the cash flow, is what it would cost to lease all these vehicles. I mean, the problem is, is if you're talking about buying an F-150 eight years from now, I can't tell you what the cost of that's going to be. That's extremely difficult to do, and obviously, vehicle prices only continue to rise. So that's kind of the main issue that we're dealing with.
Give me the cost for the next two years pretty accurately.
Sure. We could obviously figure out what it would cost to buy a certain amount of vehicles. The, the problem is, like I said, is the amount that you're going to have to budget in order to buy 65 vehicles is going to be radically different.
Mr. Jim.
This is, this, this right here has cash, a fleet budget, and it's somewhere around $45 million a year. Over 10 years, say, $45 million. Will that go on to our audit? James is gone. Okay. On, on long-term obligations, which is $104,000 now, will this 45 go on to that?
No, it's an operating lease. It's an operating lease, so it wouldn't go much different than our fire trucks, which we purchased at the end of the lease, so it's not a long-term capital lease, it's an operating lease.
Okay. All right, these numbers on, that was in there, are they pretty close?
That's a models, is what it could, obviously, we're not even following the first year from that, because it recommended getting several hundred vehicles, and we're looking at 65 for this first fiscal year. But the numbers in terms of how old our vehicles are, how many their average mileage usage, that is very accurate, because they use our data that we sent them.
So what are we voting on today?
You are voting, this piece right here is creating the partnership to lease vehicles through them. And then the amendment that you already have passed is what funds this agreement for the first, for the rest of this fiscal year.
Does this, this agreement obligate us to do anything? Like if we got, didn't like it, wanted to get out next year, can we just say, "Bye"?
We just say we don't want to lease anymore. It's the, it's, this just governs the partnership. Yeah.
You want to tell us what you think?
We don't, those 65 vehicles, we don't keep them if you get out next year. Obviously, they would...
We would just return those vehicles.
Austin, can you remind me?
Okay, okay. Still, first, and then we'll come back.
Yeah, I guess, this may be for Mr. Lawrence, as well as you, Ron. We mentioned we don't want to put these vehicles in a 30-year bond issue, right? That's been bannered about. So this seems to be a much better compromise. Now I hear cash flow in it. I mean, how are we going to cash flow it? We don't have the money. So what, if you want to cash flow it, Mr. Lawrence, how do you recommend cash flow?
We're going to cash flow it, this program will be cash flowed. I'm not talking about buying cars and cash flow them. You misunderstood.
That makes no sense.
Where are the 65 cars? What departments, again, are they going to?
That is in the, that is included in the budget amendment. So groundskeeping is getting the largest portion, a few for parks and rec, building and codes, street department, maintenance, fire.
Fire, okay.
And this wasn't department-specific. This was from the total fleet list, starting with the oldest vehicles working toward the end. So from 1994 to 2011, I think I made it through halfway to 2011.
Thank you. Well, my question, I think it's been answered, but I just want to make sure I heard exactly the vehicles, and I think that's great. And as we continue...
For those of you, I'm sorry, for those of you who came to groundskeeping the other day, you saw the condition of some of those trucks. Sorry.
So for the continued years, the department heads will be in on this process and will play a part with this?
Yes, so some of these vehicles, like I said, are 30 years old.
Yeah.
And the use of the replacement vehicle may be differently from what the intended purpose was of the original vehicle. So I'm working specifically with the department heads to find out what their needs are, so that when we replace a vehicle, we're replacing it with something that they utilize on a daily basis, and I actually would aim toward that department.
I appreciate, and I appreciate your work on this.
This also gives us the opportunity, if you noticed, the number, the different number of types of vehicles that we have is pretty outrageous. This allows us to simplify and streamline the types of vehicles that we have. That allows us to also have fewer, extra parts for maintenance and everything like that, too.
Just back on the cost, we got this year's cost down. What would next year's cost be projected as, as is right now?
It will depend upon how much you want to budget for it, and then we work backwards from that amount to figure out how many cars we can get with that amount. So Austin will work with the different departments to figure out what their vehicle needs are, and they will submit that proposal to this body. I will tell you the, it will be very, we will be able to get a good bang for our book, because what we're going to be able to do is start selling, if you pass items two, or three and four, excuse me. We will use the proceeds from selling off the vehicles that we need to replace and use that to help cash flow the leasing.
Okay, so right now, this looks like somewhere around $4 million a year. Where will that $4 million come from next year? Is it going to replace a line item, or will it be a new line item?
You have line items that are being created to fund this for leasing. There have always been capital, right? Like I mentioned, your capital cost will go down. And also, keep in mind that that $4 million number is the average of what you have been spending to this point, too, when you consider the vehicles you have been purchasing, plus maintenance and fuel.
So, just clarification, where is the $4 million coming from? Is it new money, or is it money that's been budgeted now? And if it's budgeted now, what line?
For future years? Well, nothing has been passed for future years yet that will be for this body to determine.
My point is, is this an addition to what we're spending now?
No, this is budget neutral.
So there are $4 million budgeted in '25 that would go into this in '26?
I think I'm misunderstanding your, what I can tell you is that you budgeted funds for maintenance, fuel, and obviously, for vehicles. And what we are doing is remaining revenue neutral in order to increase the number of vehicles you're getting for the rest of this fiscal year.
So, we don't know how much money that is, though?
$285,000.
Okay, so next year, this total progress on the cost is $285,000, not the $4 million that's listed here on this report?
For future years, it's going to be dependent upon how much the body is willing to approve, and we will come up with a proposal on how many vehicles we need, and then what that leasing cost will be.
Okay, so we assume this was going to be used just for the sake of audit, then this $4 million will be new money that we'll have to come up with somewhere, because it's not in the current budget.
No.
You're paring it down to 200 vehicles. You're paring it down to your saving, saving cost on fuel, saving cost on maintenance, and then also what we're purchasing in the future years, which is already purchased. They won't be purchasing vehicles, we'll be leasing them instead.
And, and just as a reminder, Councilman, you are already budgeting a lot of money for vehicles between your maintenance and fuel. That is part of the pie of the total fleet budget.
I agree. I just dislike generalizations. I like hard numbers.
Sure.
And all, and anyway.
I can't tell you what the budget for the future will be until you pass it, though.
I got, when I see this, anyway.
And once, that, that'll be amended with a, with a different schedule.
Correct.
Just goes through the 65, 67 vehicles.
The document you're referring to is more so a proposal, a model.
It's a model, correct. What is, what we can guarantee you, like I said, is the information about our fleet and our assets. How many types of trucks we have, vehicles we have, how old they are, what their average mileage usage is. And then what they do is, is they take that information to make a recommendation for us. But obviously, it's up to how much this body can afford to put towards the program.
Oh, they did excellent analysis, I'm telling you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just clarify. So next year, when we look at leasing, if this is approved, the department, Austin and the department heads will give an idea of what vehicles need to be switched out. It will come before us, no matter what, and we have to make a decision based on funding. The, you guys will present the cost to us, and then we, as a council, will decide, hey, you know, we need to wait on it or not. Is that correct?
That's 100% correct, correct. We're not obligating any funds for future years. If you wanted to not lease at the end of the fiscal year, that would certainly be your right. And you will see the, the cost for them built into the leasing line items that are being, that were created through the budget amendment.
And like Councilman Lawrence said, if we decide we don't want to continue, we're not locked in for five or 10 years, if we see this and it's not going to be beneficial down the road, we can make that decision as well.
That's correct. This, this just governs the partnership, if, how we use them, if we use them, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
From, our review on Thursday night, and then other times, we're helping to educate us on this, it reduces the number of vehicles we have. And then overall, the projected, if I remember correctly, the projected savings, while it's not a tremendous amount, is $33,000 a year, and $300,000 for over 10 years?
Yes, and the, the main reason for that is because by getting newer vehicles, you're going to reduce our maintenance and fuel costs.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion to pass eight to one now.
All right, item three is consideration of an assignment agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
This item and the next item gives us the option to use them to sell the vehicles that we currently own, and for a small nominal fee, they are the experts, obviously, in selling cars and doing so at scale. And so this gives us the ability to use them to do that on our behalf.
Further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion to pass nine to zero.
Item four is consideration of consignment agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. Second. Motion second?
Ditto. Same thing. Part two.
Further discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
Motion to pass nine to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Counsel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item five is consideration of an updated memorandum of understanding with Cities for Financial Empowerment to provide grant funding for legacy planning service. Tyler can come up here and update us on that.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. How's everybody?
Good morning.
This will be a little bit of a lighter discussion, potentially. I just want to inform you about an opportunity that the city has to continue some work with the Cities for Financial Empowerment. So, just to recap, that's the national organization we've worked with that has provided grant funding over the years to do things like the Financial Empowerment Center. This new offering is a $50,000 grant that they are going to give us. It's non-match funding, so it's just pure grant dollars they're going to provide for us, to expand services for something called legacy planning. And so, what that's going to allow us to do is our financial counselors will be able to offer to our community a variety of legacy planning opportunities, things like working through assets, talking about titles. And I think in the end, it's going to be a really great opportunity for all, all ages, young, young to old. So, do you have any questions?
We have questions from counsel. You do?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's, let's do, we can get a motion a second, then we can have the discussion on that. Now we can open up discussion.
Thank you.
Sorry, I should have asked that before.
It's okay. Hi, Tyler, thank you. The $50,000, is this for one year?
Yes, the way this will work, it'll be divided over a 24-month period. And so there'll be three installments, I think, but it'll be $50,000 spread over the course of two years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion to pass seven to two.
Thank you, Counsel.
Item six is consideration of a contract with the Mayor Life Benefits for Benefits Consultant Services.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion from counsel?
Okay, what do we get for this?
Okay. Stacy and Zach.
Good morning. So this is a continuation of our current contract with our benefit consultant at the same rate. What he does is he helps us with claims analysis, cost forecasting, and helps us stay in compliance with the laws and regulations that come along with having a medical benefit plan.
Forgive me for nitpicking, but we need money so desperately. What did we, last year, could you give me some examples of what we got, of what this person did?
He's here, if you would like to ask him, he could probably...
All right, great.
Explain that in more detail than I can, but...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So what did I do? So each month, I analyze the claims and delivery report, tracking the, what we had set aside for funding versus the claims, and it helps us with projections. I also work with the committee to explain any benefit adjustments we need to make, and having meetings with that employee benefits committee, and then negotiate with the carrier if I have to negotiate better terms, whether it's a stop-loss reinsurance or the administration fees, even though we do an RFP for that. I work with those carriers to do that.
So, so last year, what did we, what, what was the result of that, of those efforts?
Sure. We, we did an RFP. We switched from CIGO to Blue Cross, and we started working on that in January.
That was a big deal, wasn't it?
Oh, for sure.
So how much did that save us?
We don't have the exact numbers yet, because we're just in, we're still also paying claims left from CIGO.
My point is, you justify yourself last year on that.
I'd like to think I justify it every year.
I did not mean to imply that you didn't. Yeah, I didn't mean to imply that at all. I was just trying to give you a compliment.
Any further discussion?
Can we just pause for a second?
Counsel, please vote.
Eight to one abstain.
All right, item seven. Item seven is consideration of a contract with Insight Risk Management LLC for property and casualty consulting services. Motion second, discussion?
Same question.
So this is new. This is something that we've never had before. It is budgeted, but we felt like with the, the changes and the increase that we have, It is budgeted, but we felt like with the, the changes and the increase that we have, the size of the city, it continues to grow. The property schedule, I think, is over $290 million. We have, of course, a large fleet, so there are all kinds of sides, liability and property that our office manages. We could use the expertise of a benefit, I'm sorry, not a benefit, we've already done that, property and liability consultant that can analyze the data that we have from all of our claims, you know, property, liability, auto claims, and help make some recommendations for us on ways to hopefully reduce, but also save money. That, that's the goal in this, and he is here as well. He can explain that, like I said, this is new to us, but we believe it will pay for itself.
So next year, you'll be able to come in and say, "This is what we did."
Sure.
And it's budgeted, it's budgeted.
Does, does the county have something, a person like this?
I'm not sure.
All right, any further discussion here? Counsel, please vote.
Motion to pass eight to zero.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight is consideration of a resolution to support the TDOT 2025 Transportation Planning Grant for $100,000 with a 0% match required from the City of Jackson for a reevaluation of the Southern Bypass Extension Project.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Yes, sir, I think it's good for the public to hear from Mr. Pollitt, if you don't mind explaining this. Thank you.
As I explained in pre-agenda, this is a project that has been our number-one priority for many years. And the current southern extension of the bypass that we've been designing, and it passed through the NEPA phase, which is the environmental phase, is estimated at well over $200 million in its present design, and, and in conversations with TDOT, in so many words, they, they said, "We'll never be able to provide that kind of money for that project." And so we said that the need is still there. There's no alternate route for South Highland when it gets shut down by accidents or tornadoes or whatever the, the occurrence is, there's no good alternate route. And so we have been telling them that for years, and they understand it, but we still don't have a, a good alternate route. So we asked them to fund a study, to look at an alternative project that could get us an alternate route. It may not be in the form that it presently in, but we need some type of alternative route to give us that outlet when emergencies happen with South Highland, and we shut off South Jackson from the rest of the city. And also, it's the only part, South Highland is the only part of the US-45 coming from the south that is not improved. So we feel it's justified, we're, we're going to continue to push. The mayor's written letters, we're going to, we have written letters from the NPO, which are a transportation body, and we're going to continue to push for a project, and we'll, hopefully, we'll get a project that can solve this problem.
Maybe we need Councilman Donnell to say something, because he got, he got the bypass paved last time he spoke in a meeting.
That's what I want, talk about Richard.
We'll just start calling you the hammer.
All right, I'll take it.
All right, any further discussion from counsel?
Thank you.
Counsel, please vote.
Motion to pass eight to zero.
All right, Sunshine Budget Amendment is less than 10,000. Item 10, consideration of invoices over 10,000.
So move.
Second, discussion?
I have a question about Kimberly Horn for $270,000. Is that a grant funded?
That's the stormwater assessment, which is grant funded through our brand, TDEC.
Okay, but, okay, so the TDEC money we hadn't got yet, it's not reflected in the revenue, is it?
Yes.
Okay, so I must have went wrong when I went in the portal. There's grant funds, revenue in the portal shows as that?
Yes, sir, it was $2.536 million deposited on July 9th was the last reimbursement we got.